Welcome everyone to the October 28th, almost Halloween, City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here and at home. First up is a public forum, and I'd like to start out by reading this statement. "I want to remind everyone here this evening that it's important to have a respectful environment in our council meetings where all community members feel safe to express their views. To that end, we ask for no applause, boos, or comments that express approval or disapproval of a person's perspective who has taken the time to come to speak to council. In nine years of council meetings, we have achieved this goal. If you have a person who refuses to comply, I will ask council to leave the room until order can be reestablished and we can go on with the meeting. There are some very important issues that are currently in front of council and in front of our community. People have great passion regarding these issues, and each of us knows that and values hearing from you, the public." We have opened the public forum, and we have 34 people, two minutes each. Can you hear me? Sorry. So, we have 34 people signed up to speak, two minutes each because we have other items on the agenda and want to be sure we get through everything. So, the public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of the two minutes, and now we're up to 35. So, first up is Todd Hurlberg, followed by Gordon Levitt.
Before I start tonight, my name is Todd Gregory Hurlberg, and I'd like to explain how I came to sit in this chair tonight. I've worked all my life. Before I come into Eugene, I was an employee of the Department of Veterans Affairs where I was injured on my job. I fell through the cracks. I was offered a job up here in Eugene that was not what it was presented to me as. Things happened. I ended up homeless, sleeping in Keesey Square. I went to all the agencies that most city officials refer homeless individuals to. They were unwilling or unable to help me. I ended up sleeping in Keesey Square, where the only people that stepped up and helped me were the homeless population of Oregon. I'm not an activist. I'm not up here to disrupt your community. I happened to fall in love with Eugene in my short time up here. I look at what myself and fellow friends are trying to do is improving Eugene, making it beautiful, just as the homeless pioneers that originally came here and founded this town. When the town was founded and the ancestors of the old community here came, the homeless who built it didn't turn them away. Now, we feel like we're being turned away. Tonight, I would have expected us to be discussing the Whoville issue. Instead, it's been splintered among many groups that are well-intended and really want to help this population. But I think that I'm asking everybody up there, less address one issue at a time. We cannot solve all these issues in one meeting. Whoville has proven it can work. We're going to be asked to stay where we are and do what we have done for another 30 days to show everybody that it works. I believe we've already shown that. It works. It's not even in the configuration that we would like, and it is still working. Tonight, please approve the site with the amount of people there.
Thank you. Gordon Levitt is next, followed by Arthur and Charlene Toller.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Gordon Levitt. I'm 23-years-old and a second-year-long conflict resolution student at the University of Oregon School of Law. As Eugene resident since 2008 and a current resident of Ward 3, I'm testifying tonight to urge the city council to discuss climate recovery ordinance.
I can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
This microphone is flashing green and red.
Yesterday, our Children's Trust attended the Mushroom Festival at Mount Pisgah Arboretum. During the course of the day, we collected over 50 signatures for a petition to support youth in the passage of a climate recovery ordinance in Eugene. To date, hundreds of Eugenians have signed on to our petition, and there will be many more supporters in the weeks and months ahead. Residents of Eugene know that we are not doing enough to mitigate and prepare for climate change. I challenge you to address these concerns in this public forum as soon as possible. The city's youth and other concerned residents want Eugene to legally commit to its emission-reduction goals and to plan for a full climate recovery. They want to know what it would take at the local level to move more quickly to transition off of fossil fuels and to support a more sustainable future. We owe it to Eugene's youth and youth across this state and the country to show what local communities can accomplish. We owe it to today's youth to show them that a sustainable future is possible and that we can make substantial progress right now. As we've mentioned before, we appreciate the dedicated efforts of the city and the people of Eugene to make our city a leader in addressing climate change. We understand that climate change is an overwhelming issue without an easy solution. Yet, this is the most pressing issue for the youngest generation, for my generation, and for generations yet to come. Please consider discussing our ordinance as an agenda item this fall. We hope you'll stand with us, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Next up is Arthur and Charlene Toller, followed by Melika Kramer. You need to sit down, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, good.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Charlene Toller. I am part of the Whoville community at this point. Unfortunately, my husband and I, with being in the situation like we are, we cannot keep his electric chair charged all night long. There is no place to plug in his chair. We have a Conestoga hut ready for us to move into, just no place to right now put it. Once we actually get that hut placed on property, we can have his chair being able to charge up all night and be able to stay warm inside the hut. Where we are inside the tent, we are still unable to stay warm all night long, even when the temp goes down below 35. I had a friend tell me that the temp tonight was supposed to get between 28 and 30 before midnight tonight, and the warming centers are not even open. We need to have some type of a shelter that the homeless can go into as a community so that they can have some way of staying warm when the temperature drops and the warming centers are not open. Please consider someplace like Civic Stadium or even the old federal courthouse or some of the other vacant buildings that's not being used, so that they can have a place to go to. Everybody needs to be able to have a place where they can go to, be able to stay warm.
Thank you. Next is Melika Kramer, followed by Julia Olson. Just bring it down to you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Melika, and I am 14-years-old. My generation is too young to be making decisions of our future, so we need you to protect the environment that we are going to be living in. Please work hard to protect the land and our water and air. Do everything you can do to help stop climate change. I mean it. Please think about discussing a climate recovery ordinance this fall. Thanks.
Julia Olson is next, followed by Teo Olson.
My name is Julia Olson, and I'm in Councilmember Betty Taylor's ward. And I'll be really brief tonight. I just wanted to let you all know that in the next two weeks, a paper is being published by Jim Hansen and some of the other top climate experts around the world. It's called "Climate Change and Intergenerational Justice: Rapid Reduction of Carbon Emissions Required to Protect Young People, Future Generations, and Nature." It's really an impressive group. It includes economists, biologists, climatologists, and other experts, and I will email a copy of the paper to each of you. I hope that you each read it. I think it's one of the most important scientific papers that is being published in our generation, and that you consider what they say when you decide whether to put the proposed ordinance that we'll be sending you on an agenda this fall. Thank you.
Teo Olson is next, followed by Elizabeth Brown. Pull that mic right down to you.
My name is Teo Corber Frost Olson. I live in Eugene, Oregon. A few days ago, I went on a field trip to Amazon Creek, and I learned about the pollution that's causing only pollution-tolerant animals to live there. And we did a couple of samples of water quality. The reason why the creek is polluted is because of the oil and different chemicals that run off our streets when it rains. If we bike more or drive electric cars, there won't be as much oil on the roads. If we clean our air and atmosphere, we clean our water. Please put our climate recovery ordinance on your agenda. Thank you.
Elizabeth Brown is next, followed by Hazel Van Umsen.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Brown. I live in Eugene in Councilor George Brown's ward. And he's not even looking up to make eye contact at me. Oh, okay, thanks. I work for the organization Our Children's Trust, and as most of you know, human activity is specifically greenhouse gas emissions is responsible for the observed 1.5-degree Fahrenheit increase in 20th-century annual average temperatures in the Pacific Northwest. And climate change is going to have adverse impacts on the city of Eugene and its residents, and instead of simply reacting to these impacts, the city council should do all it can to reduce carbon dioxide emissions to prevent climate change and its impacts on Eugene from getting worse. One of the climate impacts this city will face is on our water supply. A 2012 report from the Oregon Climate Change Research Institute at Oregon State University states that quote "water and climate in Oregon are inextricably linked," and most of my testimony this evening comes directly from that report. Mountain snowpack has served as natural storage for summertime water supply for the city of Eugene. There has been a shift in the timing of stream flow earlier in spring, which is caused by the increase in winter and spring temperatures. Cascade mountain snowpacks are projected to be less than half of what they are today by mid-century. And as you know, a viable water supply is essential for our community to thrive, and the city council is going to have to deal with these impacts on Eugene residents now and take a more proactive role instead of just reacting and try to help prevent the problem from becoming worse. And as elected leader of the city, you have a fiduciary responsibility to protect our natural resources on which we depend on for survival, and that's water and the atmosphere. And we respectfully ask that you put our proposed climate recovery ordinance on the agenda for two of your meetings this fall. Thank you.
Next is Hazel Van Umsen, followed by Ariania. I think it is. You guys are terrific.
That's our future.
Yes.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. My name is Hazel Allens Van Umsen. I live in Betty Taylor's ward. I am 9-years-old and in 4th grade at Edgewood Elementary. I want to stop climate change and global warming because humans and animals will be affected greatly by floods, losing homes, and the air we breathe will be polluted. At the beginning of September, I went to youth climate change leader training and learned how I can help our climate. Now, I want you to continue to stand up for our climate by protecting the land and air-water of Eugene, completing your climate goals, making the best plan to protect our environment. I will be coming back to city council meetings this fall and hope that you will be putting our proposed climate change recovery on the agenda of two of your meetings this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana, followed by, it looks like Holby Flu?
Hello, Eugene City Council. I am Ariana, and I am 9. I care about stopping climate change because I understand that poor people all over the world are going to have a much harder time because of climate change. It is our responsibility and your responsibility to try and stop this. When I grow up, I want to live in a nice world. Can you please talk about climate change at a meeting this fall? Thank you.
Very well done. Okay, Holby?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Holby Fink. I'm the owner of Native and Urban Gardens, and I also am speaking on behalf of the Climate Recovery Initiative.
Speak up, Holby.
My business involves working on a daily basis with humans and their interface with the environment, and we're making continuous decisions every day about how our environment will look for the future, and climate change is going to affect that environment. It's no longer sort of just talking about the weather or the weather in passing as we do to engage in pleasantries. It's quite possible that without a clear avenue for discussion on this issue, we may face additional homelessness and complications for the future. So, thanks for your time.
I think the HVAC is giving out or something here. It's very weird sounding.
It's getting louder.
Louder and louder.
It's getting louder and louder.
Sue Sierra-Lupia is up next, and Michael Adams after that.
The timer appears not to be working.
The timer's not working?
It wasn't on the line.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know.
My name is Sue Sierra-Lupia. George Brown is my ward representative.
Speak up, please, Sue. We can hardly...
Really? It sounds so loud. Okay, sorry. My name is Sue Sierra-Lupia. George Brown is my ward representative. I'm the clinic manager for Occupy Medical, a free weekly clinic that serves between 200 to 250 patients every month. Last time I was here, I asked that our water access be returned to us, and that wish was granted. I am here to say thank you for this favor. I appreciate being truly heard and attended to. It restores my faith as a citizen. I am also here to ask another favor for your consideration. As the winter approaches, the illnesses are increasing. We need to have access to soap and water since we are seeing patients with diseases such as MRSA that do not respond to alcohol-based cleaners. We need a working handwashing station to break the chain of infection. We do the best we can with what we have. We bring in water that we attach a hose to the spigot under the tree. We heat water in tea kettles and preserve the heat in thermoses. We have been hosting guests at Occupy Medical, such as Lane County Public Health for our vaccine clinics, and we regularly pass out... Oops, sorry. Read something wrong. This November, we are hosting representatives from Whitebird Clinic and HIV Alliance to sign patients up for the Cover Oregon Healthcare Assistance. Please consider granting us a handwashing station in addition to the all-access bathroom that you already graciously supply. This will make our jobs ever so much easier. Thank you.
I feel like we're going to be launched at any moment here. Michael Adams is up next, followed by Barbara Prentice. Michael?
My name is Michael Adams. I'm not exactly sure which ward I'm in.
Talk right into the mic so we can really hear you, please.
I thought I was loud.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you up here.
Sorry. They call me Bullhorn. Apparently, I'm not loud enough in here. All right, so my name is Michael Adams. I'm not exactly sure which ward I'm in now. I just moved like a week ago for like the third time in the last couple of months. What I wanted to ask you tonight is that you consider opening two sites at the same time. It's something that I did not get a chance to write in my email to you. I completely forgot about that. I hope that you all did get a chance to read that. But the site over on Northwest Expressway in Chambers, that one is on a slope, and what with the weather, we're all Oregonians, we know how it turns on a dime. That's going to cause problems. It's going to cause hazards. It's going to cause a bit of a danger. There's going to be people that are older who can't access it as well as some of us young bucks can. They're going to slip on something. They're going to fall. Then we got more problems coming after that. So, I would ask that you would replace that site recommendation with the Broadway Hilliard location that has been going for a few weeks now. It's been running itself like we wanted, like you guys wanted, and it hasn't really been causing any problems. So, please consider those top two things. Thank you.
Barbara Prentice is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I'm Barbara Prentice, and I'm in Greg Evans Ward, and I'm a member of Occupy Interfaith. I want to thank Mr. Reese and the mayor and the city council for taking up the proposal for creating rest stops. As I understand the article from the Register Guard of October 25th, two proposals have been made to the city. I have heard from other sources that there may be a third proposal as well. I would urge the council to approve two sites tonight or to quickly review the proposals for additional sites if only one is considered this evening. We are all aware of the urgency of the need exacerbated by freezing temperatures predicted tonight and the imminent arrival of our rainy season. One of these proposed sites would house veterans and married couples only. This is certainly a worthy goal, but this population would not include most of the residents of the Whovilles that have emerged in the last two months. Quickly approving two camps would offer shelter to our veterans and to those homeless residents of Whoville who have shown so graphically the need for shelter and demonstrated that these camps can be successful. Please do not turn your backs on them. They have shown ingenuity and steadfastness in their quest for a safe, legal place to sleep. You have the opportunity to demonstrate empathy and compassion. Please exercise those qualities in your deliberations. Thank you.
Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Virginia Collins.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm the Shelter Rights Organizer with Community Alliance of Lane County. I live and work in Ward 7. I want to thank the council for passing the ordinance that allows council to authorize the volunteer-run, you know, homeless camps of up to 15 folks, thanks to the city manager for recommending to council that they pass the ordinance. We're moving forward, and that's a great thing. Garfield's council this evening should approve the establishment of two of the small nonprofit-managed camps, but in different parts of the city. We feel the Garfield site is a great location and feel community-supported shelter's excellent proposal is the right fit for that location. However, we have reservations about the Chambers Northwest Expressway site. The site does not drain well, and it's difficult to access it. If need be, the Nightingale Organization will make it work. Their proposal is also top-notch, and they have the experience, expertise, and dedication necessary to manage a site and manage it well. We feel council should select one of the downtown locations. In the heart of downtown Portland, Right to Dream 2 has been a big success. A city-sanctioned and well-run camp of 15 people in the center of Eugene could work as well. I live and work in West Eugene. I'm proud that we have the Mission, Opportunity Village Eugene, the Service Station, and more places to help the homeless, but it's time for other parts of the city to step up and help carry the load. Thank you.
Virginia Collins is next, followed by Dan Bryant.
My name's Virginia L. Collins. I thought I'd want to put in a little twist on why I'm here tonight. I was made homeless illegally just because I'm mentally ill. I retired from a very good job at Shurion. I had top-security clearance, and I used to catch people who did fraudulent claims. I've never been afraid of the police in my life. My sponsor in Nashville was a correctional officer. Since I've been in your town for four years, I am now a cripple because I was offered a warm place to sleep, and a lot of people don't like the R-word, but I've been raped four times in 10 months. I've been beaten to where now I'm a cripple for the rest of my life. My PTSD is so bad, I haven't even been in to see a doctor over my knees that have dents in them. I do not go to the camps because I do get a check, and I get no peace because nobody has provisions like cigarettes and things like that. I sleep by myself. Most of the time, I'm too afraid to go out in public. I can't go to the police because I'm camping and going. I've gone through every service. I don't have children, but I'm 51-years-old with arthritis in all my joints, and now, since I've been in your wonderful city, I have fibromyalgia. Consider us two.
I'm sorry. Thank you for sharing. Dan Bryant is next, followed by Jesse Lorkey.
Dan Bryant, president of the Board for Opportunity Village Eugene, resident in Mr. Clark's ward. First, just let me say that the previous speaker, I think, really spoke to the suffering of so many people on the street, and I cannot add any more to that except my empathy and hope that you do too in realizing how much people on the streets suffer in this city and how difficult it is for them. It's so important that we try to do more to make a difference, and I really appreciate the effort to provide the rest stops. The Board for Opportunity Village has gone on record in support of the rest stops and particularly in support of multiple locations and not just one. We desperately need more than one. I can personally attest to the people involved in putting forward these proposals. In particular, Eric and Fay DeBurr are members of our congregation, and First Christian Church certainly would support their efforts in that proposed rest stop. I've gotten to know the good folk with Nightingale. I know that they will do a good job. I've been out to Whoville on many occasions and have seen how well that that community is caring for each other, providing protection, doing their best to try to run it as best as they can in very difficult circumstances, and just believe strongly that we need to support them and hope that you will do all that you can to make that possible so that we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Jesse Lorkey is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Jesse Lorkey, I'm a member of the Trainsong Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood association was welcoming of Opportunity Village. They came to us with a plan. It was a good site, and the two most recent proposals, we haven't had time to talk about together yet, but I've got a little bit of the feedback, and I don't think we'd be opposed to another well-planned site in a good spot. But today, suddenly, there are two more sites proposed for our neighborhood, and it doesn't seem that clustering the camps is going to create a positive economy of scale. There does need to be more than one camp, and I hope the council considers other places and doesn't put everything over in the Trainsong neighborhood or right in that one area where it's outside of downtown. Maybe the resolution that allows the camps needs to be revisited. It's too restrictive in not allowing parkland that might be barely used right now because somehow the resolution that was passed ended up with a cluster of camps that fall in one area of the city. So, I'd just ask the council to consider that. Thank you.
Ally Valkyrie is next, followed by Mark. Ally Valkyrie is next, followed by Mark.
Ally Valkyrie, Ward One. I move lot two. I have to say that if I lived in the Trainsong neighborhood, I'd be very angry with these site recommendations. Uh, both these sites are less than half a mile from Opportunity Village, and they're very well-hidden from public view. And to be blunt, it really kinda reeks of socioeconomic discrimination to put every single city-sanctioned homeless project in one neighborhood. It seems the point here is to hide the homeless from public view so that wealthy parents of college students don't have to see any evidence of the poverty in this community. It's also pretty obvious to me that at least one of the recommended sites was not chosen for its actual viability as a site. The Northwest Chambers parcel, while better than absolutely nothing at all, is tucked between a steep slope and the train tracks. Uh, I've stood in the middle of the city-owned portion in the rain, and I can tell you firsthand it floods. It's tricky to access by vehicle, and the vehicle access point is not even on city property, so you'd need to get permission for us to even drive up on the site. There's no sidewalk access. Anyone who's disabled has to be directly on Northwest Expressway in order to get to the site. I wonder if any of you have actually walked this parcel, and I really wonder how any pilot project is gonna gain public support if it's completely hidden from public view. Uh, Right to Dream Two in Portland is right in the heart of downtown, and they've gained public support as well as governmental support because they've showed in the public eye that a homeless camp can be orderly and a good neighbor. Um, both the Broadway-Hillyard and the Eighth Mill parcels are ideal for a small-scale duplication of R2D2 success. Rejecting these parcels because of their public location frankly is both narcissistic and kinda hypocritical. You have no issue with visual eyesores when someone's profiting, as evidenced by the architectural travesty that just went up at Thirteenth and Olive. This ordinance was passed over a month ago, and I really feel like we're dragging our feet. And frankly, starting with two sites doubles the chance that a successful model will be proven. Let's not forget that these are human beings. Two sites means you're aiding in the stability of thirty people. Think about it. Thanks.
Mark is next, followed by Cameron Fox.
How ya doin'? How's it goin', y'all?
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name's Mark. How's it goin', Kitty Percy? I'd like to say something. Can I ask you a question first? Can I ask you a question?
Just say your piece.
Can you give me an answer? Can't you give me an answer?
Thanks, Trix.
How about the, uh, homeless situation in the county of Lane? You know anything about that?
So, the way this goes is you have to make some comments, and then you sit down, and the next person does. So, please make your comments, okay?
It kinda sucks. Yeah.
One minute. Six seconds.
Or less, if you want.
It sucks, and people are dying out here. I don't know if you realize that or not. It's a shitty situation. Sorry for the language.
Good if you didn't use it.
Death, famine, hunger. Dying out here. It's a lot to say.
Thank you. Next up is Cameron Fox, followed by Nicholas Fox.
Good morning. Good evening, my name is, ah, sorry. Good evening, my name is Cameron Fox. I am thirteen years old, and I have lived in Eugene for all my life. Facing my future and the future of all, in the youth of not only this nation but of the world is the threat of climate change caused by our enormous carbon pollution. Government should have acted long ago, but it did not. Now there are horrifying things facing my generation and me, such as rising seas, floods, heat waves, fires, superstorms, and increased war due to food shortages. Yet, like any threat, it is preventable to a degree. Respected scientist Jim Hansen, former head of the Goddard Institute in NASA, came up with a plan to slow the effects of climate change and perhaps even bring equilibrium back to the atmosphere by reducing our carbon dioxide pollution by six percent a year. Eugene should take it upon itself as a model city to create a plan. Last year, we banned plastic bags because they were destroying our coastline. By accepting and putting a plan into action, you will make the world a better place for my future and the future of those who will come after me. By not creating a plan, we would feel that you do not care about us, or our future, or the future of those who will come after us. By not creating a plan, I would feel that you do not care about a third of the world's species which would go extinct because of climate change. By not creating a plan, I would feel that you do not care if coastal towns like Newport and Florence get annihilated. A six percent reduction a year is not much, and is easily doable with some creativity. Once Eugene puts a plan into action, other cities will follow, and we can finally have some hope for our future. So please, so that you care about us, and consider a plan for Eugene to reduce by six percent carbon a year.
Nicholas Fox is next, followed by James Beeson.
Hello, I am Nicholas. Good evening, City Council. My name is Nicholas Fox, and I am seven years old, and I am a second grader in Eugene. I care about stopping climate change because I saw stream drying up. I heard about tornadoes that are a mile long, and I know that the mountains where I like to ski are losing their snow. In September, I went to youth climate leader training and learned how to, uh, how I could protect our climate. Now I ask you to protect the land, air, and water of Eugene, and make a plan to reduce carbon dioxide pollution that is causing climate change. I will be back in two weeks and hope that the city council will talk about what to do then. Thank you for caring about our climate and listening to Eugene's kids.
Next up is James Beeson, followed by Ronnie Oren. Arena.
It's come to my attention a while back there was-
Can you hear me? Talk in there, just so I can hear.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. My name is James Beeson. I live in Eugene. Went to school here all the way through, even in college. It's come to my attention to, I believe, the Eugene Weekly, that there was a million dollars allocated for the homeless problem, to, uh, eliminate the homeless problem. What was spent on was the streets and the bars under the bridges so homeless people couldn't get out of the weather. That's potholes over people. How can that be? And then, my number-two question is, if this money was allocated, and there's approximately ten thousand people in Eugene that's homeless, that split would be a thousand dollars, sort of maybe a little more, and that would easily pay the deposit rent and deposit on utilities first time. Then we have, uh, EPV's problem, prejudice against the homeless. It's outrageous. It is unacceptable that EPV, Eugene Police Department, would consider giving lesser services to other people, especially people that they proclaimed to be their help. Excuse me. Might need to look into that. And then we have the city saying, "We don't wanna spend money on this." But in fact, I know fourteen signs that cost close to three hundred dollars that were put up, "For no camping" signs. We're learning Spanish from those signs. Thank you. Problem is, is-
Thank you. Ronnie Oren is next, followed by Sandra Bond.
Hi, Council. I'm Ronnie Oren. You know, I'm not gonna yell at you about the police tonight. Um, I came to bring you a little bit more of my personal story. Um, along the same lines of that, um, older woman who spoke earlier, who I'm sure broke all the hearts in this room. Um, I too have been sexually assaulted multiple times while living here in Eugene, whether it was by someone I was living with, or by someone I didn't even see their face. And I really think that, um, to echo her sentiments, the homeless would like to be able to go to the police despite, you know, their camping situation. Um, and I would like to be part of the group that started kind of this relationship between the homeless and police that would be beneficial, where the homeless could go and say, "This happened. Please hear me." I don't know how often you walk by the homeless memorial that is, um, just across the street from us. Um, I knew a bunch of those people. Um, I knew them personally, and from the stories I've heard of some of them, they actually passed away by their own means. A couple of them did, after similar experiences, because it's humiliating to say, "Well, I'm doing something illegal while I live here, wherever I'm sleeping. I'm doing something illegal, so I can't go to the police. I can't go tell anyone what's happened." I would like for Ms. Syret and Ms. Poling, Mr. Poling, to, um, please get ahold of me. I will be leaving messages on your phones, um, tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Sandra Bond is next, followed by Mark Justina.
Hi, I'm Sandra Bond, and I live in Eugene, and Betty Taylor is my councilwoman, and I am here to talk about fences. This has been on the agenda for quite a while, and it may be knocked off again tonight, and it doesn't need to happen tomorrow. Anyway, um, what I want is a deer fence in my front yard. They have done this in California, and they have done this in Ashland, and I have these rules from the city of Eugene talking about fences and accessory structures, which is very confusing to me. And I have talked to people for several years on the phone about this. But, um, what I want to build in my front yard is a deer fence which would consist of posts on each end and some hog wire. You could see through the whole thing. I'm not blocking anything. My house is in the middle of the block. Um, and I started getting more interested in this as I realized we were now having all these farm animals in our yards, but I still couldn't put a fence to keep the deer out of my front yard, so I can't grow my vegetables, and I can't have my fruit trees 'cause the deer eat it all. Um, I'm told that the fence needs to be set back seven and a half feet from the street, but that changes in different parts of town. And, um, this handout I've tried to read, and I can't really, but, um, I know there are lots of people in my neighborhood, southeast Eugene, that have built illegal fences, either right next to the sidewalk, or taller than whatever the city says it should be, and the policy through the city right now is to not do anything about that unless somebody complains about the fence. I don't wanna build a fence until I know somebody's not gonna complain, and I'm gonna have to tear it down. But the other concern I have is there are all these rules and regulations that the city has-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Justina, please, and then Sabra Markroft.
Good evening, I'm Mark Justina. I live in Eugene, and, um, I wanna talk about the homeless camp at the corner of Hilliard and Broadway. Uh, what a complex issue this city has in front of us. Um, it's necessary that it gets addressed, and I hope we take the appropriate steps to have a solution for everybody. But I am concerned about that location, the Hilliard and Broadway. Kitty Corner from that facility, um, is the site that my great-grandparents, uh, first lived on when they moved to Eugene. It's been in our family since the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, the amount of graffiti, human waste, and trash that has shown up on our property since that, since the Whoville site went in is, um, it's disgusting. Uh, we just had to bring a crew in today to clean up mountains of human waste. There is, there has to be a solution. We need to address it, but it needs to be beneficial for everyone, and I just can't urge you guys enough to consider a different location other than the corner of Hilliard and Broadway. Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Gary LaFleur.
Hi, my name is Sabra Markroft. I live in Ward Seven. Hi, my name is Sabra Markroft. I live in Ward Seven. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. Thank you for all of your attempts to address these issues. Really appreciate your patience, even in dealing with people that often are not very The situation is really tough, and you know that. There are many, many folks that are just down on their luck, and others that have other problems going on. But everyone needs to sleep, every single one of us. And as long as we keep wasting our precious time and resources, keeping people from doing what they have to do to survive, we ensure that people will be angry and hungry and desperate. Can we not just open our hearts a little bit more without being afraid of being hoodwinked? Eyes open doesn't mean heart closed, and heart closed certainly doesn't mean eyes open. Please use your discernment wisely, and realize that within each one of us beats a heart, including yourselves. Thank you for your time.
Gary LaFleur is up next, followed by Stefan Sheen.
I, um, live on the River Road, um, area where they're planning on annexing some land to Eugene. That's your, um, C, Adoption of Resolution, annexing city to Eugene, on the B, Future Homes. And, um, as a property that is adjacent to this, I'm just concerned, and, uh, I haven't been to these before, to find out, um, how these, how you deal with things at these meetings, so maybe I should've done some more research between now and then, but they sent us a notice saying it was going to be a meeting for talking about it, and it sounds like there's more urgent things going on than what I'm talking about. But I was basically concerned with, uh, the type of housing that was gonna go in it. I'm concerned, you know, they're throwing houses in so close now that you can, um, and I don't know what this property is, what this company has in mind back there, and I just want you to know that I, we're concerned if they are stacking houses in there. I'm not saying they are, but anyway, that's my main concern right there. And, um, and then a concern that I thought there was some ruling that they didn't have to annex, um, in order to build in that area anymore. I thought that was considered, found illegal or something. Our property has been annexed to the city because they made a, um, over twenty thousand dollar improvement to the property, and, and that there, I thought they went back on that because there was, um, it was illegal or not, um, constitutional, I don't know what. So, anyway, I was just came here to find out more about it, but it sounds like, like I said, there's more things going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stefan Sheen is next, followed by Lynn Porter.
Hello, Councilits. Stephen Sheen.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm here today to echo what Mark Justina said. Uh, I'm opposed to the Broadway and Hilliard location for the camp. Because of all the waste and, uh, just a mess- Because of all the waste and just mess there, we've secured the location. I can feel the pain of a lot of people. When I first moved here, I didn't have a whole lot. I bought a $25 chainsaw and a $200 truck. I cut 23 cords of wood, was able to start a business down in downtown Eugene. We've done so well, we've got four employees now. Now we've secured this location and we tend to have 15 employees. So I believe in hard work and I believe in giving back to my community. We now sponsor two kids each year that are misfortunate and we pay for all their school supplies and pay for all their clothes for the school year through just hard work and dedication. And I believe anybody can do it. I know we just, we need to find a solution for everyone here too. But I don't think that is the solution, that spot, Broadway and Hilliard. All right, thank you.
Lynn Porter is next, followed by David Clark.
Lynn Porter, Ward Seven. The register guard ran an editorial on Saturday urging you folks to reject the Broadway and Hilliard site for a homeless camp on the grounds that, oh my God, people could see them, which is, you know, blatant prejudice. The human waste that these people are talking about didn't come from the camp. They have their own porta potty, which is paid for by the residents and by supporters. You really have two choices for that site. You can have a legal camp there, a well-run legal camp, or you can have an illegal camp there. I can't speak for Whoville, but I don't think they're going anywhere. And I don't think they can be forced to go anywhere. A lawyer has told me that if you get ticketed in Eugene for illegal camping and don't show up in court, what happens is it goes on your credit report. Well, for poor people, that's a joke. We don't have credit and we don't use credit, okay? Or they can show up in court to contest it and clog the courts. We can do that, too. It's a good site. It's accessible to everyone. It has high walls on two sides. It's near the services that homeless people need in order to survive. If we really need to deal with the delicate sensibilities of middle-class people passing by who can't stand to look at poor people, homeless people, the people organizing these camps are quite prepared to put up a visual screen around the site, okay? I hope you won't reject it because of people's prejudices. We have good people lined up to run these two sites. People I've known for a while and have great confidence in, Ally Valkyrie of not-
Great and Gail. Thank you. David Clark is next, followed by Drix.
My name is David Clark, Ward Seven. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council as well as Eugene Police and Fire Departments for their continued service to this community. I've been keeping up with the developments as it pertains to finding a solution to the seemingly out-of-control homeless population here in Eugene. And I'm hopeful that the proposed solutions will alleviate some of the concerns that I bring to you tonight. My wife and I own and operate a frozen food manufacturing business in Ward Seven. The nature of my business requires daily visits from federal food inspectors operating under USDA. As a result of my type of business, I'm required to follow the federal homeland security, food defense, and bioterrorism plan. My federal inspectors often arrive in the very early hours for inspections and during this past year, they have noted some safety and security issues surrounding the perimeter of our processing facility. They have asked me to respond to their concerns and have asked me to consider moving my business to a more secure neighborhood. The things that concern me, my employees, and the federal inspectors are major amounts of human feces, urine, graffiti, drug needles, garbage, harassment, people sleeping against our building, people sleeping on our entry, people sleeping in cars, and some have been sleeping in the same car for four years. During our five years in business, I have lost production time and wages due to cleaning up the messes. After shoveling humanure, I then have to go home, shower, and change clothes before returning to food production. I don't call the police. I tend to just deal with these issues as they arise, as I feel unfortunately that it comes with the territory when doing business in the Whittaker. Only twice have I absolutely needed the assistance of the EPD. Once due to a man threatening me with a gun after he broke into my locked building while I was working. And another when a man I woke who was sleeping on the property came out of a sleeping bag swinging a bike chain at me. Most times I'd just take care of it myself. But this year and especially this past summer, the activities of the street population have risen to a new level that is not acceptable to me.
Thank you. Drix, you're next, followed by Patty Luce.
Hi, my name is Drix and I live on High Street in Eugene. Eugene, thank you very much. This is, my mind jumped, sorry. This is an ElectroVoice 635 microphone. This microphone they used to promote by hammering in a nail with it and then still using it. This microphone was popular when they built this building. All the voices have gone through it, all the thoughts, all the connections. It's kind of exciting. So it's kind of a geek moment for me, I apologize. This has been a great, great meeting for everyone. Oh, I should have notes here. Play for this. What? What is one of my favorite new words. It's, if you watch South Park or Abbott and Costello or any other comedy sketches and setups, they always have one person explaining something different to them. And the only answer you can say is, "What?" And it buys you a moment to re-line up your thoughts and understand what was said. Well, that's what I hope I bring to our meetings here is the what. Like, "What?" And I'm used to it. I've been like this most of my life. And it's a gift. And just like Eugene is a gift. And all of our questions and homeless and land uses and all that's, these are just problems that we solve. I just want to take a moment to remind everybody that through the history of the universe, everybody, the Egyptians, the Romans, the Greeks, the people from Washington, they all would look to us and feel like we're really blessed. We really are lucky. We are the talisman for all of history. And these problems are going to be real small. And we'll solve them. We'll figure it out. And then we'll move on. But it takes everybody. It takes everyone here tonight. It takes everyone watching on cable endlessly, thank you very much. And it takes people on the internet and it takes interpersonal communication. And if we can connect from there, all of these other issues will just line up. And don't worry, I'll keep coming back. So that's what I do. Thank you, Jean. All right.
Patty Luce is next.
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Emily Semple is next, followed by Jean Stacey.
I'm Emily Semple. I'm in George Brown's Ward. I'm tired. Aren't you tired? We're all tired. And it's not just from interrupted sleep. We're tired from two years, two years of all talk, no action. It's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed. Aren't you embarrassed? Be brave. Make us proud. Choose goodness and give two camps a chance. It's easy, like Uncle Phil. Just do it.
Jean Stacey is next, followed by Thomas Ivanis.
Jean Stacey, various words. When I look at what's going on with the national government and the incredible stupidity that I think we all have to live with right now that's going on there, it really makes me grateful to be part of a city that is actually tackling the problems that we all face and trying to confront them head-on. And I just give you a great deal of gratitude and respect for bringing these rest stops, OVE, and trying to see that the community that you're governing can join together to make them happen. I deeply appreciate that. I think that we need to realize that with one of the sites that's been working so well, the Whoville site, that yes, I understand the problems the gentlemen are talking about and I'm sure they're real. And I understand the problems, the fears that the sorority group has. But we need, part of our job is leading people away from some of the myths and stereotypes. The truth is, the dangerous place for women in this country, two of the most dangerous, are the US military and college campuses. And it's not homeless people that are raping the women in the military or on college campuses. And we need to talk to these young women about this. They're young, they're afraid right now, but they won't be if they have a better understanding of reality. Many of us will be very happy to talk to these young women. Also, once we reduce the population there to 15 instead of 30 or 40, give them the authority to manage the camp, things will be much better there. I think you have realized and are investing in a better way of doing things. And the faster we can get camps open, these two good projects, the faster Eugene is to making good on your efforts. Thank you.
Last up is Thomas Ivanis. Thomas? I guess not. Okay, so I'm going to close the public forum. Thank everybody very much for coming. A lot of tough issues tonight. I did want to say to all of those who came on the climate change issue, appreciate their being here. Are they still in the room? Wanted to tell you that we do have a city climate and energy plan. I hope you're familiar with that so you don't think that we don't have one. So I hope we'll have that as part of your discussion. Also, in terms of the folks who came to talk about the homeless issue, I want you to know that the old federal building is actually full. It's fully, it's full of people, Federals. And I also want you to know, of course, that Civic is not ours. And we don't get to make a decision about who's in there. So just wanted to share that information. And in terms of the business in Whittaker, I'd like to have a conversation with you about that. And I just want to say that it makes me sad to hear that because I know this is a business that gives back to the community all the time. It's very, very generous. So we'll try to be helpful with you. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Yes?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate your comments, Mayor. And, you know, we'll be talking about the rest stop sites as part of our work session, but I just wanted to address the gentleman who came with concerns or just commenting on the River Road annexation. So even if the property is annexed, there'll still be a full, robust public process on any proposed development on the property. So keep your ears open or there might be an interested parties list that you could join if you write to the city of Eugene, just our general interest email, and they can loop you into that process so you can stay apprised of anything that might happen on that property. I can't answer his question about when properties are required to be annexed or can be annexed. So city manager, if you might address that briefly for us, that'd be helpful.
If the property is being developed or will be developed, they are required to annex into the city before they can actually develop. So if they are planning on either putting housing or some other development on there, they are required to annex into the city.
Thanks. And to the gentleman with the business in Whittaker, I did chat with him just before our meeting and we'll continue to follow up on that issue as well. Thank you.
Elton Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came. I hope we can, I hope we approve two sites tonight and I hope we'll do something about the fence issue also. But I'm especially admiring of the young people who came to talk about the climate issues. Some of those very young people spoke extremely well, clearly and for a good reason. And I think everyone should be aware in relation to that, that the land in the Abazan headwaters is in immediate danger of being developed, which is a threat to our water and an environmental threat and something that we can see that we should do something about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very, very much. We'll move on with the rest of our agenda now. Next up is a consent calendar, council president.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anybody asking any questions or saying anything, so I guess you're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So now we go to item number three, an ordinance adopting amended hazardous substance tracking. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The Toxics Board recommends adoption of an ordinance amending the Toxics Program's hazardous substance tracking instructions for reports due beginning April 1, 2014 and removing one hazardous substance from the list of reportable chemicals. These recommended updates are housekeeping in nature and are intended to clarify reporting procedures.
Okay, I'll put the measure up there.
Sure.
The ordinance?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5100, an ordinance amending the hazardous substance tracking instructions for reports due beginning April 1, 2014 and removing a hazardous substance from the list of reportable chemicals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing anyone with any questions or anything. So all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, none in opposition. It passes. All right. We're here to the heart of the meeting today, the homeless rest stop site recommendations. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, following our previous discussions related to the development of rest stops for the homeless, council directed staff to recommend a city-owned site in which 15 tents could be set up on a temporary basis managed by a community organization at minimal cost to the city. Tonight, I recommend that council approve two pilot rest stops, Northwest Expressway at Chambers and Roosevelt, west of Garfield. One of the rest stops will be opened as soon as possible while a second will be opened following the demonstrated success of the first. The purpose in recommending two at this time is to establish the location and allow staff to begin preliminary work on a second site to allow it to be opened efficiently. The Northwest Expressway and Roosevelt sites provide the best possibility for a safe and successful pilot program. They have transit accessibility, are near complementary services for the population being served, are least likely to create division and conflict within the community on an issue where support is critical for success.
Okay. You want to, Michael, you have something you want to-
I can add a few statements before that, just to talk briefly about how staff kind of refined the list down from our last meeting, which was five sites, to two sites. Our focus, well, one site was removed, the Willow Creek site. I think there was just a general lack of interest in that site, but also it was purchased with HUD funds a little over a decade ago. So there's two parts. It has not been put into use for HUD intended purposes, so HUD is asking that we put that through a disposition process. We're currently underway with that. But also, any use of any of the proposed uses that were coming out of these conversations would not meet HUD criteria. So we just went ahead and requested that be taken off the list, which brought us down to four sites. Staff, then, we've looked at, you know, the analysis that's been going on with the different iterations as we've come to you and asked for new criteria. And what we hadn't been looking at and took a turn towards was access to existing services. So what we did was look at within a mile perimeter of each site where the most comprehensive homelessness assistance services were. And we found that these sites recommended by staff, both the Trainsong and River Road area, were located to the most established and comprehensive sites. We have them within a mile of Catholic Community Services, the Lent Home Service Station, the Eugene Mission, Willamette Families Buckley House, Looking Glass Station 7. Part of the rationale is that not only will the people ideally who are using the sites be close to services, but we would expect that because of the limited capacity of these sites, that a number of people will be showing up and will be being turned away. And we have to consider the resources for those people who will then be in the area. And the diversity from youth shelter to the mission to day services all exists within a walking distance of that area. On the downtown sites, while there are services, they're less comprehensive and less focused on regular day-to-day activities of the homeless. So we have Whiteford Downtown Diary Room, which has limited hours, and then First Place Family Center. So that was kind of what pushed the next level of this analysis, past the more land use analysis we've done in the past. To address any questions, I've come up with drainage on the site. I contacted engineering, public works engineering today. They didn't know of any issues. They assumed because of the slope of the site that that would not be a problem. Given the size of the site, it's the last site remaining on the list at 1.1 acres. I think there was an assumption made that just because of the size of the site and the limited number of camperies flooding in an area would not be a problem for the whole site. It's something that could be, but more in-depth analysis would be performed, proven or anything. So that could be done after this meeting.
Thank you for that. I want to ask one question. I think it's still true. Whitebird does provide services at the mission, too, right?
Yes, right, twice a week. Case management and medical services at the mission. Case management and medical services at the mission.
All right. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I continue to advocate that I believe the wisest course for us to actually solve the problem, to pragmatically do something that could help the need that exists, is for us to act as a resource for information, rather than doing this. And the reason that it concerns me, there are multiple reasons, but some of the chief among them are going to be the capacity to say that perhaps we've done something significant or helped solve the problem, but it'll be for fifteen people, and the need is so much greater. I'd actually like this, to see us working on a problem that puts us in the appropriate role and actually has a chance of fixing the problem. Secondarily, I saw an email from Council Polling earlier in the week that echoed and listed several concerns of mine for some time to Glenn, and I never did see a reply on that with regard to liability. So if you could, Glenn, I'd like to hear about that.
And I believe when I responded, and it was later this afternoon that I responded to Council Polling, I may have only responded to him, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
The answers to the other questions that I hadn't answered, in terms of liability, yes, the council could decide that the city has to require liability insurance. So you certainly have the authority to do that. Our recommendation is that you not do that, and the recommendation is for a couple of reasons. The first is, part of, as we looked at what the potential liability would be for the city, we determined it was very small. The likelihood that something would occur on one of these sites, if you authorize it, that somebody would be able to actually successfully sue the city for, is very small. One of the reasons for that is because you are, unlike most actions that the city takes, this one, you're actually deciding at a policy level to move forward. Because of that, there's a, an immunity in the state statute, liability statute for governments called discretionary immunity. Where a city council, at times, a city manager, makes a policy-level decision balancing different factors, should we move forward? There's some reasons to move forward, there's some reasons not. When you act at that policy level, the discretionary immunity exception kicks into the Torque Claims Act. So that's one reason why, even if somebody otherwise might have some kind of lawsuit against the city, we think it would be unsuccessful. But also, as we talked about, what kind of claims people may have, we concluded that the risk is very small, certainly smaller than a lot of other actions that the city currently takes, where our Torque Claim Fund simply deals with that kind of claim. So liability's small. The other reason we said that we recommend that the city not require this is it would be an impediment to the rest stop notion in that this was supposed to be something quick, something that we weren't requiring actually a nonprofit or another legal entity to actually be the sponsor of. The way the ordinance was drafted is that it can be a nonprofit, but it also can be an individual. To require somebody to get an insurance policy creates an expense for that person or that entity. We did require such an insurance policy for Opportunity Village, bigger site, more permanent nature. So here, we're recommending that you not do it. Council Polling also asked about whether St. Vincent de Paul had liability insurance, both generally and whether the operators of the car camp sites had liability insurance. Staff talked to St. Vincent de Paul, and what they were able to find out is, St. Vincent has general liability insurance, you know, that covers their operations generally. They don't have anything specific for the car camping program. And as far as the operators of the car camping sites, those businesses also would have their own general liability policies, but as far as staff were aware, they didn't have anything specific for the car camping program.
Okay. One of the other questions for me was about the administration of the site, whether it be an individual or an organization with regard to conflict resolution, I can see easily. And one of the, one of the other concerns I had is that I thought it better, based on what I've learned, that these be diffused in location, but it seems like they're being clustered here in one place, which gives me pause for supporting it, I have to say. If you're going to have twenty people show up every day and only fifteen are allowed, somebody's going to have to choose. You get to stay and you don't. And I'm wondering if there's any manner of administrative procedure created for conflict resolution.
Michael, you can weigh in. The intent would be is that whoever has management of the site is making those decisions on a daily, frequent basis on who comes onto the site and who doesn't.
If I'm the sixteenth guy who shows up that day and they say, "I'm sorry, we don't have any space for you," and I say, "That's too bad, I'm going to stay anyway," then what?
I don't know if you have a more detail, but...
I don't have a more detailed response because we haven't ventured into developing operating agreements with any of the interested parties yet.
Do you anticipate covering conflict resolution in the operating agreements?
It was covered in the Opportunity Village agreement, and I believe we'd use that as the rubric for how to develop these agreements.
Okay. Thanks.
Before I call on Councilor Saret, I just wanted to verify something. City Manager, tonight, we're not talking about whether we have camps or not. Is that correct?
We're not talking about whether we have camps or not. We're proceeding on previous direction that the council said, "Come back and make recommendations on sites for camps," and that's what we're proposing.
Because council already voted on the issue of whether to have them.
The council already gave previous direction by approving an ordinance that gives that direction, yes.
Councilor Saret.
Thank you. So I am inclined to support the city manager's recommendation tonight, but I have some things I'd like to say, and I might need a second round, depending on how long it takes. So I've supported this rest stop proposal and taking these steps to create legal temporary rest stops. I think it's a humane response to the problem of homelessness. And it also protects the city from potential lawsuits, in keeping with the Ninth Circuit's court decision that found LA could not enforce some of their anti-sleeping-on-the-sidewalk laws because they weren't providing alternative places for people to be. So if we can show we are making an effort to provide legal places for people to be, any potential lawsuit would likely be mitigated by that fact, and the court would see that we were actually making an effort to address the problem. As has been pointed out, you know, my, I had predicted that the criteria the council set for these rest stops would result in my ward and certain parts of my ward being identified as having some of the best options. And if you can see the map, you can see the two sites proposed for tonight are fairly close together. My neighborhood, I live in Whittaker, and other parts of my ward have felt a disproportionate impact of homelessness for years now, and most likely will continue to bear that impact regardless of what happens with the rest stops. That's for a lot of different reasons. I've heard from residents in my ward that they want some of these sites located in other parts of the city, and we've heard from some folks tonight about that. They're telling me that we can't continue to expect Trainsong, Whittaker, and Downtown to be the only places to accommodate folks who are struggling. So I am very sympathetic to that idea, but tonight, I feel more concerned about getting this program started and giving it the chance to prove itself. It's not perfect, but it's a start, and I want to keep our eye on what we are trying to accomplish and not get stopped by trying to iron out all the issues right now. Equity and distribution of these sites is important, but I think those things will come as we get success with the first sites. So these would, should only be, these should be the only sites that are located in Trainsong, Whittaker area, and other sites, future sites should be located in other parts of the city. And I wanted to address some of what folks are saying about the impacts they're feeling with their businesses or other places. You know, part of the hope for these temporary legal rest stops is they will divert people from our parks, our streets, our back porches, and the other places that they've been sleeping and living. These sites do not impose new costs on the city budget and, in fact, can help mitigate the problems that have cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in unbudgeted needs to deal with cleanup of camps and other impacts of illegal campers. Costs that are not budgeted but have to be dealt with. I have a little bit more to say. I'll wait for a second round.
Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. I'll just focus in on the recommendation specifically. I was attracted to the city manager's recommendation because I thought, or at least it appeared that the site at Chambers and Northwest Expressway was large enough where there was a significant ability to provide some opportunity there. I'm very concerned that if there are drainage issues there, and so I would be very interested in finding out what kind of mitigating opportunities there are. I still would like this site. I think there's some potential, because of its size and location, that we could, that this might be a very usable site, but not if it's going to flood or it's going to be underwater. So if there's a way to mitigate, if there's a way to move things around, what could we do to make this site workable? Simply because I think, because of the location and its size, it is one that I would very much be interested in, but not if the people there are going to be underwater. As far as the other sites go, I think there are some challenges. They have been able to operate to this point, but I don't know how many people are there. Could they reduce the number down to fifteen? Could that be done in an orderly way? How could that work? Questions around human waste and other things, there's still questions to be answered. I don't have a, necessarily have to make a decision tonight, one way or the other, but those are questions for me, is how we could do that in an orderly way and how we could make it more visually appealing. I mean, in Portland, they have fences that they put up, a wall of doors, to at least make things much more visually appealing. That would have to be a part of any conversation about staying at either one of those locations. And I'm also very concerned that there be good management and orderly operation if they were to ever stay in those locations. So I'm still open. I'm seeing that we're moving, but I need to know what can we done, what can be done to mitigate the site at Chambers and Northwest Expressway, because I still would be interested if we can overcome those issues.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I share Councilor Pryor's concerns at the Northwest Expressway and Chambers site. I visited it last summer when it was dry, and it wasn't apparent, but now, thinking back, I noticed there was a slight depression by the roadway, and so I can see that that could, especially with a storm like we had a few weeks ago, that could be, that could be a really bad situation. I, I think we need to be a little bolder and approve two sites. In fact, I'm going to make a motion, and I'll discuss it briefly if I get a second. I move to approve two homeless rest stop sites instead of one.
Your second?
Second.
Excuse me, Mayor. Tonight, the purpose is to approve an actual site. It's not to approve one or two. So the motion, Councilor Brown, should be to approve, and if you want to list the two sites for the council to approve, that would be fine, but a motion to approve two sites isn't what the council needs to accomplish tonight, is to actually approve a site at a particular place or places.
I see. Well, reading the AIS, I somehow came away, my takeaway was, we're being, we would only approve one site to go into operation, and then pending successful operation of that site, we would actually approve the opening of another location.
So what the manager is actually requesting is that the council approve two sites, and you have the recommendations, the Northwest Express site and the Roosevelt site.
I see.
If the council approves both sites, then the manager's plan is to immediately proceed to getting a site agreement in place with the provider for the first site. While that's happening, to do outreach as far as the second site, if the first site is working well, then the manager can sign a site agreement with another provider or the same provider for the second site without needing to come back to the council. So the manager is requesting that you approve two tonight.
This was probably the crux of my misunderstanding. So I, well, I'd like to change, I withdraw that motion, but I'd like to make...
Why don't you let George make it after we finish? Okay, all right.
Well, I, I'll withdraw my motion, but I'll make another motion when the council president throws that motion.
So he's just withdrawing.
The second has to agree to withdraw.
We have more conversation. We'll come back.
Has to be okay with a second for him to withdraw.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
The Parliament Police.
He doesn't, you don't need any more time on the clock.
No, I don't.
No?
I'm going to make a motion, but I mean, a motion to substitute.
Yeah, I understand. He's through for now.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I've got in, anybody else in the queue for the first, Councilor Zalenta?
Yes, I'm going to support the city manager's recommendation for two sites as well. I did have a question about the two sites that were brought up by Nightingale, the ones on Broadway and Hilliard and underneath Ferry Street Bridge at the Sixth Avenue turnoff. And I was wondering what staff thought about those two sites and reasons for not recommending those.
Well, the Ferry Street Bridge site wasn't on the original, I'm sorry. I moved it closer and then leaned away from it. The Ferry Street Bridge site wasn't on the list that we were working from. Technically, it's not a city-owned site. It's leased from ODOT, so it didn't make the original list, so it was never brought to council in the original discussions. And there's some questions about what can be done with that, given its current status as a leased site. And what was the first site? I forget.
One that, on Franklin.
Broadway and Hilliard. Like I mentioned before, we just ran it on accessibility to the most comprehensive, larger variety of services, and that's how we kind of just trickled down that way in that sense. So we weren't saying no necessarily, we're just trying to prioritize the four remaining sites based on service criteria.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've said this before, that there are no perfect sites. I don't think any site's going to not have somebody object to them. That doesn't mean we shouldn't proceed. I don't necessarily like that they're all clustered together, but I'm okay with that for now because they're temporary and this is a pilot, and we're moving forward, and I think that's what we need to do. If they work, they can be expanded, and we can disperse them across the city, as we do with, we have a policy, actually, with low-income housing dispersal policy, that would be a good model here to follow. And we could, we could ring that up as we move forward. Also, I've had, heard a lot of comments about homeless people lately, and I wanted to respond to two of them in particular. One is that I think it's really easy for people to characterize homeless people in a very narrow way. They see the activists, and they don't like what they're doing, and they don't like what they look like, and they think that's the homeless. But the homeless is a lot broader than that. It's everything from that, you know, that woman that was here that was telling that tragic story to children, to, to sons and daughters, and uncles and aunts, and mothers and fathers and daughters and sons, and it's also, and it's Vietnam veterans, and it's all sorts of people that are out there. And it's the kids that have been sleeping in their car for a year that go to school, and the teachers know who they are because they don't smell so good. And they're hungry, and they're not paying attention because they don't have a place to sleep. So the homeless is a really broad problem in this community, and it can't be narrowed down to a very small segment of people that you don't particularly like. So I think people need to have a broader view of what the problem is and how we can, how we can solve that. So with that, I'll support the city manager's recommendation for these two sites.
Okay. Before I go to round two, I just want to make a couple of comments, and I do think this is a good faith effort to find locations and have the best chance of success to start this out. And I have heard today from, about concern about them being clustered in a certain part of the community, unfair burden on that part of the community. It's a burden that needs to be shared by the whole community. One of the things that was said today is it would be a lot more palatable if they got something for it. If you're going to give them these two places to have in that part of the community, what can we offer as a city that is an additional plus for that part of the community? So I'm, it's my hope that as we look to, I don't know, I just picked off the top of my head, where you might do matching grants or, I mean, really put the community that is making the decision to take on this hard thing, help them have some more of the programs and services that the city offers, and sort of push them up the list for benefits. And then with Trainsong has more homeless in their, in their area, maybe they can have more programs from the city, and they can benefit in some way in the long run for this. So I just want to put that out there as maybe a positive that can come out of it. City Manager?
I just, I appreciate that, those comments. I also wanted to respond to Councilor Clark. We are continuing... We are continuing with the work on the, being a broker of information, how can we do that as a city?
Appreciate that.
So that hasn't dropped off the agenda, and we're continuing to move forward on that, so I just want to assure you of that. With respect to the mitigation, if there is water or drainage issues, you know, for us, one reason why two sites makes sense is you can, our, our best outcome is we're successful at the pilot program, and so we will be working hard to make it successful. And so if there's a, an issue that comes up, we'll work to try to mitigate that issue. If it becomes one that is a showstopper, then we may be back to council with some other options, but we're, we want them, we want it to be successful, which is why we're selecting these sites. From our perspective, we can be the most efficient, effective, and successful with a pilot program moving forward. So that's what we're trying to head to.
And the only other thing I wanted to say is that I think we've also heard people's concern about health issues, and so we have to keep our eyes on health issues in these camp situations, too. That's historically been an issue. And I did want to say, this is very different than what has been done in Portland, but in the case of Portland, they actually have asked them to move from one location, they want to move it to another location, and the city council has put off that decision because it caused such an uproar, that they put it off for 60 more days. So it's not, this is not necessarily a smooth deal, no matter where we're trying to cope with these, with these issues. You want to put the, oh, you had, you wanted more, I'm sorry, her first.
Just real quick, so I just wanted to say I have a lot of confidence in volunteers who have stepped forward to offer to manage the sites, so I'm very pleased to see that response from the community in terms of taking up, taking us up on our offer, if we provide a site, will you manage it? And that's very encouraging. And I wanted to echo what Mayor Piercy said about if we do end up locating these first two sites within Trainsong and River Road, you know, what can we offer the folks in this community? They really have been generous in their attitude towards these projects, and I think we need to find some way to recognize that and let them know how much we appreciate that, that response from them, whether it's enhanced police patrols, not because there's a homeless camp, but because some of those neighborhoods feel underserved right now, parks or playground enhancements, again, matching grants is a great idea. So I just want to reiterate that. And then someone in public comment mentioned access issues around the Northwest Expressway site, and that some of that land is owned by Lane County. Do we have an agreement with Lane County to allow unfettered egress and entrance to that through their right-of-way?
We've been in contact with the Public Works officials over there, and they don't see it be an issue. We don't have a formal agreement in place yet, but we would be working with them to, to work out any issues that might arise due to that.
So I, I think getting some kind of formal agreement would be important on that. And then I would just continue to encourage the city and the advocates to continue to talk to other agencies such as E-Web or ODOT, to see if they might have other parcels of land that could be considered, and, you know, the city is pretty limited in what parts, parcels of land we have that would be appropriate for what we're trying to do here. So I think we need to keep looking to other agencies for support. And then I will say one more time, these are not permanent camps. This ordinance expires at the end of March, so unless the city council votes to extend the program, these camps would shut down at the end of March. So for folks who keep asking, worrying about permanent camp, permanent camp, they are not permanent camps.
And just to clarify, City Manager, as I understand this, even though I too appreciate the proposals that have come forward, we go through a process to decide about who would host these. We have not made up our minds at this point, right?
That's correct. I know we have worked with some in the community, and I think have worked really well. There are some very committed people that also to make these successful, and we're continuing to try to work with them to do that. So we haven't made a decision yet, pending this decision here from the council, which then allows everything else to get finalized.
All right. Councilor Evans?
Excuse me, I had a thought. In terms of incentives, is there a way that we could provide a tax credit for residents who may be in around or adjacent to, or a business that would be, you know, directly or somewhat indirectly impacted by the location of a camp?
You could not provide a property tax credit because property taxes are governed by state law, and there's no state law that authorizes such a credit. A credit is really just property tax that is not received. What you could do instead is you could pay money out, but that would require taking money out of your general fund and giving it to property owners.
Okay. Let's put, oh, oh, George, pass it back down here, George.
What?
His.
The motion?
The motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I can read it back though after you make that motion, because I wrote something out. Sorry.
You made notes.
Okay. I move to approve the Northwest Expressway Chambers site and the Roosevelt Garfield site as recommended by the city manager.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Brown?
I think I can count the votes around the table, and I think most people that support this idea will support this motion. I'm not necessarily opposed to this motion, but I, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion, and-
An amendment?
So I'd like to state my proposed amendment. How does this work? Does I have to move to make an amendment and then have a second? Okay, I move to amend the motion with the words, the motion would stay as it is, however, this would be an addenda. If in fact the Northwest Expressway and Chambers site proves unsuitable during, due to drain, bad drainage concerns during high-water events, then the Broadway and Hilliard site would be substituted as the second site.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I'd like to speak to that briefly. I, I'm slightly concerned about the clustering and the concerns about the bad drainage there. If in fact that does not prove to be an issue, you know, let's face it, there's only going to be 15 people there, so perhaps they're on the high ground next to the street. If it's not an issue, then fine, we move ahead with the two sites. However, if it does become an issue, if it's unsuitable because of boggy water, you know, during, during high rains, unhealthy and unsafe, I think we ought to have a backup site for the second site. And that's the reason I like Broadway and Hilliard, is there's 30 people, approximately 30 people there now. If that was 15 people with a decorative border and, you know, sanitation facilities, like I believe they have now, there haven't been any complaints from businesses or restaurateurs in the area. In fact, some of the homeless people from that site actually patronized some of the restaurants. And so the people in that site are not causing the problems in the neighborhood, and it would even be further reduced if it's reduced down to 15 people in a, you know, a camp with rules and with gatekeepers, and similar to the Opportunity Village. So that's the reason I would like to amend this, just so we have a backup plan if the other site proves unsuitable.
Councilors Alenka?
I'm not opposed to the Broadway and Hilliard site. I think we'll all end up with sites in all parts of the city and all of our wards eventually, but at this point in time, I think I'd rather have the city manager go back to the drawing board, walk, work through the process of evaluating the sites that are available and making the best decision possible based on all of the parameters that they've been working with, rather than us selecting one off the cuff. And so I'd rather see the city manager come back to us and say, this doesn't work, and here's my, here's my suggestion for an alternative site, and here's why. So I won't support the amendment.
Councilor Brown?
I appreciate that view. My suggestion really wasn't off the cuff. I've been, I've been living with this since last summer, visiting the sites and going back and forth and trying to decide what the best sites are, and taking in, you know, near neighbors' concerns and access to, you know, bus lines and stuff like that, so. And I've actually went back to several of the sites, including this one, and it's going to be 28 degrees tonight, the first freeze, and there's more coming up, and so, you know, two sites, it's only, it's only going to be 30 people, but it's something, it's something. You're right, the people that spoke in early, we're not going to solve it all tonight, and this isn't intended to, but, but I just feel like for every delay that's caused, more people are going to suffer more nights needlessly, and we have the capability to alleviate a little bit of that suffering. I believe that, that this would allow to speed things up and get another site open if this, one of the proposed sites proves to be unsuitable and unworkable.
Councilor Zaret?
Yeah, so I, I seconded Councilor Brown's motion, just because I think it's important for us to have the conversation, and I do think there's some concern about how viable the Northwest Expressway site is, and I wouldn't want us to be held up waiting to come back to us and go through this conversation again. I do have sympathy for the situation at the Justina site, the property there. My analysis is, though, that it's because it's more likely because it's a vacant location right now, there's not a business in there, rather than the fact that, that the Whoville has popped up across the way, because there are sanitation facilities at that Whoville site, and I think with some fencing, the optical issue of, oh, we don't want to see your need could be mitigated. So I, that's why I seconded this motion and would support it, but I would not support it at the expense of approving a site tonight.
Councilor Zaret?
Mr. City Manager, what would be, what was your plan B? Did you have one of an alternative site should the two that you didn't recommend move forward?
We still believe we can make these two sites work, so we're, we're not proposing sites that we believe are unworkable. So we would still be working to make these two work. If for some reason there's a showstopper in there, then we would come back based on evaluation of the sites, giving it some thought, and then coming back with a recommendation on why we would recommend a particular site at that, at that time. But we're, our intent is still to make them work.
Okay, Councilor Evans?
I, I support moving forward with the city manager's recommendation as is, and the reason being is that I don't think that we should get caught up in the minutia of trying to direct city staff in terms of what they think is best in this area. I think that they've done the analysis, they've come back and given us two sites that are, at this point, look like they're workable, and I think that we, we should just move forward with this. If we see that one of those sites, or either one of those sites does not work from a physical standpoint, then the manager and staff can come back with other recommendations, but I support what Councilor Zaret said, let's just move on with where we are right now, look at what we have in hand, and we'll see what we can do about fixing it when, when and if it becomes a problem.
I think we're ready to vote on Councilor Brown's motion. All those in favor, please indicate.
This amendment.
Yes. One, two. In opposition, one, two, three, four, five. It goes down, we're back to the main motion.
Three to five, is that what you said?
Six.
Six, sorry.
Mr. Klein, this would not be the time to bring out a motion on requiring a provider to come up with a general liability insurance, not only for the provider themselves, but for the city as well as the occupants of this area, would it?
Correct, this is not the time.
I'm having a hard time hearing, sir.
The time to make that motion would be right after the council acts on this motion. So what you're proposing, Councilor Polling, is not an amendment to this motion, it would be a new motion. So the time to make that is after the council votes on the main motion.
Okay. Would it be better, Mr. City Manager, if I brought it up at the next meeting when we discuss this again?
Yes, and the reason why I say that is, again, part of what we will do if, if the council passes this motion, is we will engage with providers, try to work through the details, and we have the details that may provide additional information on how you may choose to then proceed with your motion. So I would suggest not doing it right at this time, let us go through some of that, and so as we work through that, if there's still some questions, then that would be the time to do it, I think.
All right, so just, just so you know, I intend to bring that issue up, so between now and the next time we meet on this issue, if I could get wording for such a motion, I appreciate it. Also, I am not going to be able to support this, this motion. I think that section, or the code 4.816, subsection three is fundamentally flawed. We started out this discussion with just someplace safe for people to sleep, and now what we have are camps. Anytime you start adding garbage facilities, toilet facilities, that's no longer someplace to sleep, that's campground. I appreciate Councilor Zaret's comments about that this is just, these aren't permanent, it's a pilot program, but then again, I am really concerned about Councilor Zaret's comments about, and I'm going to just paraphrase, basically says that eventually all parts of the city is going to have one of these. So is it a pilot program, or have we already decided that this is going to be permanent, we're going to have one throughout the entire community? So at this point, I'm not going to be able to support the main motion.
All right. Yes, Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I too will not be able to support on some of the same grounds that Councilor Polling mentioned. Another issue for me is that, I don't know how to describe the conversation that took place about the locations there. My concern wasn't so much about the neighbors of Ward Seven, about the locations being clustered as it was, the residents of the camp. What we've seen historically is that when we put folks in a higher need of services in close proximity in that way, that's where we get into some challenges for them and the way they want to live, and I'm concerned about them, as well as the fact that we're doing this in, all in seven, which has seen that as well, so I can't support this either.
Councilor Zaret?
Just to be clear about what I did say, I said if they work, and I believe they will, then I believe that we should follow the example of our low-income housing dispersal policy and, and spread them around the city, which I think is a fair and equitable way to do it, and we've got precedence for it in the way that we do our low-income housing program.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, I don't think that anybody's suggesting that, wow, let's just set up homeless camps everywhere in town, but the fact is, they're already here. They're here in every ward downtown, they're all over town, and people were kicked out from along the river and from the wetlands and the BLM land and city land, and so where do you, where they were outside, out of mind, except for uses of those facilities, sometimes people walking by the river would, would notice. So when you're kicked out of the periphery, where do you go? You go to the center. That's why we're seeing Whovilles in the center of town. They're here, I think our choice is, just besides a compassionate response to the problem, would be, do we want to see zillions of rotating unregulated clusters, you know, with no porta-potties and no trash pickup, and, you know, causing, causing problems in a ceaseless loop of activity, or do we want to like set up some regulated places that are safe for people to stay and address the problem in at least a small way? And I think that's the way to go, so I will support this motion. Thank you.
I think, yes, Councilor?
I just want to go back and remind- I just want to go back and remind council, as well as the folks in the audience, that this is really an issue that needs to be addressed in concert with Lane County. And I say that because Lane County has the human services budget that needs to be dealt with in terms of homelessness. We also need to look at the long-term solution of providing a shelter, which we don't have. And so, I'm not looking at a long-term series of camps that sprout up around the community. What I'm looking at is a shelter that we can have, that we will centralize services for people who need mental health services, alcohol and drug addiction services, and also services to help them get placed into jobs and to get out of the homeless situation that they find themselves in. So, the long range of this is for us to be able to work with the county to provide a shelter that is going to address these needs in a comprehensive way and not just go, because camps are not the answer. Everybody knows camps are not the answer. It's not the answer for you to get rained on in a tent or, you know, some other kind of apparatus that you try to cover yourself with. We need a shelter, and we need to make sure that we're having those conversations with Lane County and moving towards a shelter. And that's what we need to do.
I agree with Council Evans. As I've said before, what we really need is shelter, a building. But for now, I will support this motion as a temporary measure. And I hope that we will work toward getting a shelter. Just to wrap this up, I think that we all know that by doing this, we still leave a lot of people without a means. And so, we're just doing a small part, trying a couple pilots to see if they will help. But the real answer, as Council Evans and others have said, really rests with all of us in the community, doing many things to be sure that people are taken care of. And it can't just be us, because we can't do it. It has to be us as a partner with organizations and other government entities all across the county. So, it's work of our entire community that we need to do. But we'll do this bit tonight. All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. Thank you all.
Fences? Never mind. I'm not done.
Unbanged.
Unbanged. I just felt like we'd gotten to this point. Screw that. All right. Onto fences.
That was the relief.
Item, next item. Fences. Work session on fences. And, City Manager.
Almost got you out of the room. City Manager, you want to talk about fences?
Was that actually a choice, or was that?
I'll turn over to Mike for a presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks, John. Good evening. Mike McCarron with the Development Department. I'm here to provide some information on fences for your discussion tonight.
Mike, you're going to speak up again here.
We will, I will get a little bit closer.
Please don't talk, so we can continue with our business. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Is that a little bit better?
Excuse me. Could you all, please, hold your voices down, because we have to move on with another topic. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, in Robert Frost, 1914 poem, Demanding Law, his neighbor states that good fences make good neighbors. So, we're here tonight to review Eugene's fence standards and how they can contribute to supporting good neighbors. So, fences have had a longstanding community value. They designate property lines. They provide some security and privacy and hopefully keep the family pet at home. The first best regulations in Eugene appeared in the 1968 Land Use Code. The standards followed the national norm for cities in establishing a maximum height of six feet for residential properties. And we'll be focusing on residential properties this evening. And that's measured from the tallest horizontal member of the fence, not including the pumice, but the horizontal member. And that's measured to the ground below. In 2001, the city council modified the maximum height of fences in the front yard setback from six feet down to 42 inches, three and a half feet. And that front yard setback is the first 10 feet of private property when that property line is adjacent to a street. The policy discussion at that time was to improve the streetscape aesthetic, increase eyes on the street, so neighbors could look out for each other, and also support pedestrian safety. And the fence standards were last modified in 2008 for corner lots. And that change allowed houses on a corner lot to bring their six-foot fence up to the front corner of the house on one side. And this allowed for a larger enclosed area and some additional privacy. So, here's a sample graphic to illustrate our current standards. Now, you won't be able to read the detailed information, but it serves our purpose. So, a six-foot fence is allowed here in the interior yard setback at the side and rear of the house. And up front, in the 10-foot front yard setback, you would allow, be allowed to have a 42-inch high fence. So, this could extend through here. This also shows the last code change, an example of, on a corner lot, you have two regular setbacks. You have this regular setback and this regular setback, because there's two streets. What the last code change allowed was its six-foot extension up to the front corner of the house to have that larger area in the back. One of the questions I had in preparing for the work session was how fence height was determined on slopes. So, when there's retaining wall, fence height is measured on the high side. Measuring from the low side, you're in some difficulties there. If this was a five-foot retaining wall, and you only were allowed to have a six-foot fence, you'd only have a one-foot fence, which would provide some hazards. So, what do other jurisdictions do? In preparation for tonight, we looked at other cities in Oregon, and generally, they had a fence maximum of six feet in the backyard, like Eugene, and between a 30- and 42-inch maximum within the front yard setback. Ashland's the only jurisdiction that specifically mentions deer fencing. And their standards allow up to an eight-foot fence if the fence provides an open, unobstructed view through it. Makes it clear that chain link is not considered an open, unobstructed view. So, staff check with some local fence contractors. Well, what really works out there in the real world? What do they use to help their customers manage deer, either outside the city or outside one of these required setbacks? So, they typically build a wood or woven wire fence up to six feet in height with eight-foot posts. Then between that six to eight feet, they'll install two to four smooth wire strands. And they find this to be very effective in keeping deer out of that enclosure. Fences over six feet but below eight feet that have these smooth wires do not need a building permit, because they don't create wind load. So, here's an example of this type of fence. So, you have a wire frame here. This is kind of hard to see, but wire in a wooden frame, and that's about six feet tall. And then you might be most visible here. There's actually three wires with some tensioning devices there that are effective with the deer. So, this fence would not require a building permit. So, in summary, our current fence standards, residents can install an eight-foot fence, like this one, five feet away from a property line in the backyard. And they can install an eight-foot fence 10 feet away from a front property line next to the street through the front yard. So, I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Council Brown?
Yes, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly with your last statement. This type of deer fence is allowed in people's front yards, but it has to be 10 feet from the sidewalk?
10 feet from the front property line. And older parts of town, that typically is one feet back from the edge of the sidewalk closest to the house. In newer parts of town, if it's a smaller road with a planned expansion sometime in the future, you could have a larger setback.
Why would it need to be 10 feet back? That's, if your front yard is only 30 feet deep, that doesn't leave, or sometimes only 20 feet deep, that doesn't leave much. Is there a reason for having it 10 feet back?
The 10-foot front yard setback has also been even before the 1968 code. So, it's a traditional standard throughout many cities, municipalities. I believe the general intent was to not have structures up close to the street, as opposed to commercial, where we're trying to increase our density up close to the street for residential areas, is to provide a little bit of that residential streetscape and open area at the front.
So, it's for the appearance, you're saying?
Generally.
But we could change the, we could change the code to make it so you could have a six-foot fence up to the property line if we wish to, right?
That would be an option in...
I've seen them some places, the see-through fences. But if we're encouraging people to grow food at home, then they need room, and they need, in the many parts of town, they need a fence because of the deer.
I do have an example of a fence that has an open wire fence in the front yard setback. I can show that to you. So, I didn't check the property ownership on this. So, if this is one of your homes, I apologize ahead of time. But this shows a wire, open wire fence. And we can assume the property line is maybe close to the sidewalk. So, this fence does not meet the current city code. To be in compliance, the beginning of this fence would be moved back 10 feet from the front property line approximately to this area, and then that would make it into compliance.
Hey, Council Zelenka?
So, and it has to be a clear or see-through fence, right?
Well, right now, the city standards do not make any distinction between the materials or type of construction. And so, that's one of the goals in having a clear, objective land use code, is to have it be simple to administer. We don't have to spend time on that currently. Ashland has made that distinction in their code.
So, to be clear, our current code allows you to build a wooden, six-foot slatted fence 10 feet back from the property line?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the, what kind of, the cyclone fences, are those considered wire see-through fences? I missed what you were saying. You went through that pretty quick.
Sure. No, I can cover that. So, again, Eugene doesn't make any distinction between the type of fence. I'll say with the exception of if it's something as a required landscaping, there are some landscaping standards. But generally, for residential properties, there's not that distinction. So, we don't have that distinction. Looking at Ashland's code, they get into some details about to allow an eight-foot fence in the front yard. It would have to be clear and obstructed. And then they have some additional guidelines of what that means. And they specifically say, that's not a chain link fence. That doesn't qualify.
Chain link fence doesn't qualify as an obstructed see-through fence. Okay. Thanks.
Council Zaret?
Yeah, I don't have any particular questions, just some observations. So, it seems like part of the impetus here is folks have usable garden space in their front yard that they can't fence off without violating code from the deer. You know, I think Ashland code is a good model for us to pay attention to. That's a community that pays a lot of attention to how their neighborhoods look, and they're really into the details around that. And they have a lot of deer. So, I think the see-through fence, you know, that might be the right accommodation between us wanting to have eyes on the street when the city council made that change many years ago to lower the allowable fence in the front. So, it would still be a fence that could keep the deer out and still be see-through, not chain link. You know, I see a lot more of those types of fences around town, and I think they're pretty attractive and allow people to see the wonderful gardener landscaping that's on the other side of them. You know, so if we're encouraging urban agriculture on one hand, and folks may have only the front part of their yard that's usable for gardening, I think we should look further at what we can do to accommodate that. So, I appreciate, even though the late hour, being able to have this work session. Thank you.
Council Pryor?
Thank you. I appreciate the issue and the conversation. For me, the principal trade-off here is between safety and functionality. Anyone who's pulled up to a corner where an illegal fence goes right up to the property line, you can't see around that corner. And if you make that turn, you could get whacked or you could not get whacked. I think the idea of having lower fences on corners was a very wise one for a safety issue. And so, the logic of that makes sense to me. But to the issue of being able to build a see-through fence up there where you still have the safety consideration and you can still see, to me, mitigates a lot of that. So, on the functionality side, if people do want to grow and they do want to protect themselves from deer and other things, I think being able to build a fence that's tall enough to do that is good. But it's, but it can't be at the expense of public safety. An attendant issue to that, which probably you don't have anything to do with, I don't know if there's fence people and there's planting material people. But the fences, for the most part, are good. But there's a lot of folks who plant, and they're like my wife. They plant something small, but they can't imagine it's going to get big on the corner, and you still can't see. What is the city's role in terms of planting materials that are obscuring people's view as they try to drive down the street? Is that your area, or is that someone else's area?
There are restrictions for planting within the vision clearance triangle at corners of intersections. There is not a restriction for private property that's not in a vision clearance triangle. I believe I have one example. For example, this hedge is allowed, even though it's obviously over 42 inches, but it's not a structure. And so, if people do have patience and want this additional privacy in their front yard, they would be able to use vegetation.
Yeah. And so, that's a really good, that's a great illustration. For me, there would be an enormous concern that this creates a visibility issue for people driving. And so, I'm all for people protecting their property against deer and being able to preserve their, their planting materials if they want to grow vegetables and things, but not at the expense of public safety. I'm really, you know, more and more concerned about the ability for us to preserve public safety for people driving, walking, and what people by accident do can obscure our ability to have vision. And we've got more than enough accidents already. We don't need to contribute to that by creating ways to obscure vision. And so, I think we should, we should also talk about this as an attendant safety issue.
Council Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of a related question, where I agree entirely with Chris about doing things to enhance visibility in front yards. With regard to fences in backyards, I would have just the opposite sort of feeling, especially as it pertains to, as we grow more densely. I've always wondered why it's of value to have only a six-foot fence in a backyard that may adjoin a neighbor, where easily you can, you know, see right over that into the neighbor's windows. Why is it not an easily allowable thing or even an admirable thing to have an eight or a 10-foot fence in the back that actually provides for a separation between those homes?
I'll just share some anecdotal. In talking with complainants about fences over six feet in the backyard, there are cases where that is an impact on solar access for their garden. If they have a garden back there, that can decrease that amount. I've also heard from property owners where a taller fence goes up, that just the feeling of being kind of claustrophobic or not having that open space feel have been some comments, I think, in the past.
I once, I don't want to give them away. I had a friend, let's say, let's say that, who was a fireman. And I always thought that the reason that you could only build a six-foot fence in the backyard was for the sake of if they needed access and they, you know, need to get to the house that may be burning across the way. And let's just say someone near me put in a fence that was taller than that. And when I mentioned this to my firefighter friend, he said, "That fence isn't going to stop me if I need to get through there to put out a fire. It doesn't matter how tall it is." It doesn't matter how tall it is." Thank you.
Yeah, in my younger days, Mike, I'd rather take on a six-foot fence than an eight-foot fence, trust me. You know, I agree with what Councilor Pryor just said about functionality and...
Public safety.
Public safety. Thank you. I can see the problem with if we were to allow the, what I'll call deer fencing in front yards, and then the plants get out of hand and they do block on the corner lots, and even at driveways, block the vision in or out. You know, I'm all for people wanting to grow things in their, in their front and backyards. I fortunately don't have deer where I live, I just have dogs running through my planters, so that's another problem. But, you know, I, I would like to go explore the idea of the deer fencing topic a little bit more. I think we need a little more discussion on it, maybe get some other, you know, pictures of other types of deer fencing. But then, you know, on the flip side of that, there's also the part that, okay, so somebody plants a garden in their front yard and puts up one of these deer fences, and the next year, they decide not to plant a garden, leave the fence up, you know, how are we gonna enforce that? You know, is it, is it gonna be required that they have a garden, if they have a deer fencing up? I mean, you know, there's, I think we're, there's a lot of questions that we need to ask, but overall, I'm, I'm in favor of discussing the deer fencing a little bit, a little bit more, and because of the hour, I don't think we're gonna get it all completed tonight.
Councilor Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I agree with several of the other councilors. I think this, exploring the, a little bit more detail, the see-through deer fencing for front yard gardens, you know, as we're trying to encourage more urban agriculture and local food security, I think, I think it deserves a little more investigation. And I just like to, I have, I just have one more question, I, a couple. I'd like to just back up to this photo here. Did you say this was a legal, this was a legal fence, because it's plant material and not wood or, is that a laurel fence?
I do not know for sure. The current standards don't regulate vegetation growing on private property in the front yard setback.
Okay. And then their gate, of course, is of illegal height and dimensions and everything. Would this fence be also legal up to the sidewalk if it was on a corner and wrapped around a corner, speaking to the safety concerns mentioned earlier?
So at corners, there's what we call 35-foot vision clearance triangle. So if you take the curbs that extended and where they intersect, those lines intersect, and then go back 35 feet on each curb, connect those two points, that would not be allowed to have any obstruction over 30 inches above grade.
But it's okay, as long as it's in the middle of a block and not in the corner?
That is correct. We sometimes hear from property owners about vegetation or even smaller fences next to driveways where it makes it a little bit more difficult to see as they're backing out, but that, that is not prohibited. That could be between, working out between neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. I think it's already illegal to have vegetation that obstructs the view, and I know I have called sometimes on behalf of constituents even tall grass, and people have been told to cut it if they're at a corner and it's too tall, you can't see. But I think this is a different matter. The fence, the see-through fence does not obstruct a view, and I hope that we can have a, do I need to make a motion to have something come back to allow us to vote on whether we could have see-through fences in the front yard?
What I would suggest is, based on the conversation we've heard, it seems like there's a majority of you that want to move forward on something like this. What I would suggest is, we would put together a proposal, it has to go through the Planning Commission because of the, what it is. We would then take this to the Planning Commission as a proposal, and then it could come back to you then, which we'd have a public hearing on, as a way to get at having a deer fence in the front yard. But I think what we're hearing, at least what I'm hearing, is concerned with the safety, so we'd have to be concerned about that. Can we put it up to where it actually sits on your property line as opposed to 10 feet back? So that was something we've heard. And then also having it see-through, tall enough to prevent deer, and I guess that's eight feet, apparently deer go jump to eight feet. And so that's, yeah, that's, that's what I've heard. So what we do is, using that, work with the Planning Commission, propose, put a proposal to them for them to take a look at, and they would make a recommendation to you, as opposed to coming back for another work session, which may not get scheduled for February or March.
So could we, how could we start that process of having it up to the property line and in the, a see-through fence in the front yard?
I, I think all of you just say we're okay with what you just said, City Manager, and that will get us started now.
He just did. He said that he's gonna do that unless he hears otherwise.
Okay. Some of them already exist, I can show you, but I know they're illegal and some people...
So you wouldn't wanna show us, probably.
Some people, I don't have one, but some people want, don't wanna break the law, but they want a fence. Thank you.
Right, so we're, we're ready to go do the work unless you say no.
I don't know how soon, Betty, because we have, we'll have to fit it into the schedule.
And it has to go through the Planning Commission, and so what we've brought back is a planning commission recommendation for you.
He started it tonight.
Yeah, the process is starting now.
Okay. Thanks.
So you're, you're okay with that. Yeah.
Okay. Now I think I can officially end the meeting. Okay? Thank you.